Meeting is called to order. The Run Me Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Laws of 1975 and Title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Bearer Hall, Run Me Post Office, Mary Bold School, Align Bingo School, Bray Downing School, and the Run Me Public School District website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, board members.
Patricia Adair. Charles Buckeye.
Present.
Maria Benzarella.
Here.
Samantha Spalding.
Here.
John Wark.
Angel Beebe.
Here.
Naomi Davidson.
Present.
Patricia Smith.
Here.
Lynn Terrell.
Here.
Also present, Mark Ainucci Superintendent, Earl DeSalo, Internal Business Administrator, Dr. Sean McCarron Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Yezzi Hadaliva, she was here for the work session, Steve Peely Principal, Mary Bold School, James Winkelsbeck Vice Principal, Mary Bold School, Lori Hines Child Study Team Supervisor, and Butch Bruner Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need approval of minutes. The regular meeting November 20th, the regular meeting December 2nd, and the executive session December 2nd.
I'll make that one.
I'll second that one.
Motion made by CHAZ, seconded by Patty Smith. Roll call.
Patricia, um, Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Benzarella?
I abstain from November 20th and yes, December 7th.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Hold on a minute.
I need to abstain from November 20th as well, and yes, December 2nd, both.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
And John?
Motion carries.
Thank you. We need a motion and a second to approve the financial report.
I want to get motion to approve financial report.
Motion made by Lynn.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Angel. Slow me down if you need to.
Yeah.
You're good, because I write it down as well. Roll call.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Benzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no presentations at this time. Uh, we all heard Mr. Colaveta when give the audit report, so you know, you had a chance to look over that, it was in your packet, and we also, I passed this around, got a nice little holiday card with pictures of the Yezzi family. Right now, we are open for public comment on agenda items only. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and/or complaints through the initial contact with a staff member or members involved therein and Chief School Administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the Board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to topics to be addressed on the published agenda and limit in length to three minutes. The Board President will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to comment on any action item on this agenda. Please respect the following procedures. Be recognized by the Board President. State your full name and address. Identify the resolution or item number which you wish to comment. Wait until be recognized before you make your comment. Limit your comments to the specific resolution or items, and limit your comments to three minutes per person. At this time, do we have any public comment on agenda items? Mr. Schmidt?
Good evening. John Schmidt, Gloucester City, New Jersey. Always find something to ask. Um, could you, two questions. One, can you explain specifically what the process is under personnel, number one? Does that enter any type of contract with them? And the other issue, if you could address under C4, that contract.
Okay. Number, uh, number one under personnel is just to approve two substitutes on our substitute list, because we don't use a service, we do that in-house. So where other districts pay, if they use a service, we have someone in-house who calls subs as on an as-needed basis.
So you're hiring them as a sub so you can use them?
Well, they're going to be on our approved list, but the one, we need to wait for paperwork before she's able to come in. And, um, we just had a conversation earlier about number four. What's happened is there's been laws that have been changing recently with homelessness status. For example, if I have to move home, say I live here and my parents live in Gloucester City, and I have to move home because I no longer can afford my house, and my family and I live, go move with our, with my parents in Gloucester City. When I go to register my children in Gloucester City, they're going to ask us questions, and they're going to ask us why we are no longer living there, and if it's due to financial reasons, then we, according to the state and the schools, not, not other parts of the state, but according to the schools, they are considered homeless, and therefore can bill the district for tuition for their children. And what you missed earlier before you came in is, the Board had asked the administration, because this has been the biggest year for this in all of my years on the Board, so I wanted to make sure, so the Board asked our administration to make sure that they are actively, when, when kids come in and register in our district, to make sure that they're actively asking the right questions, because it seems like we're paying, and, and this is no, this is just a fact, seems like we're paying an awful lot of homeless tuition for students, and more so now, but as Earl said to us, there's been a new law in the past year, and that, so this is very common now. But I just feel like we're paying a lot of money, but I don't necessarily know that all the new transfers coming into our district were getting that money for the same circumstances.
With those two issues in mind, and it's not to the level of, there's another Board of Education, a friend of mine that I was helping out with an issue that I came across, and they stopped this, at the Senator no contracting meetings actually tonight. Under the School Board Association little guide, what actions can an outgoing Board of Education take? And from the New Jersey School Board Association itself, a Board of Education is a non-continuous body whose life lasts only from organization to only organization, and a Board may bind a successor Board only when authorized to by statute, such as where the legislature specifically permits Boards to enter into multi-year contracts, collective borrowing agreements, and superintending contracts that span the lives of several Boards. I won't read you every single word. Essentially, the lame duck Board can do regular things such as approve purchase orders for supplies, bills, class trips, those types of things. Adding any additional employees, or it says contract with the other school district, would the lame, is the lame duck Board allowed to do that?
Okay. That's just a chance again. Earl, who's the expert, says yes. Because I don't really like understand, comprehend what you're trying to say. I mean, I don't want you to read it all again, but I, like, are you meaning this contract? Because this is a law, we have to follow this law. It's a law that we take, that we pay for the student because they're homeless.
Like I said, it's not on the same level as what's going on in this other district.
Okay.
But I saw a contract, I figured I would add.
Yeah, it's not like, it's, it's a contract per se that we're responsible for this student, but it's for one year. We're responsible for the student. Our homeless liaison is shaking her head here in front, she's, she's the one who held up one year.
But what you're, you're responsible for the student.
And in regards to personnel with that, is the lame duck Board allowed to do that?
Yes. Lame duck Board has all these full authorities than any other Board.
Not according to the New Jersey School Board Association.
When they're referring to contracts, they're talking about negotiated master agreements and those kinds of things.
Personnel last multiple Boards.
Boards are allowed to approve a personnel contract. Lame duck Boards are allowed to approve a personnel contract.
Even though it appears to be their school boards is otherwise.
That's your interpretation of it.
I'd have to look into what you're talking about, because I, I just, you know, I don't understand what you're saying.
I just figured I'd ask, I talked to you a little.
Okay.
I figured I'd ask since I saw it, so.
But do you understand number four and number one, the agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on any agenda items at this time? No? Okay. We did review the secretary's report, the superintendent's report, and the principal, nurses, building and grounds report, special education report. We asked some questions in the work session. Did you want to say anything else, Mr. Ainucci? You want to?
I'll give you a brief summary that came along ago, just that district enrolled in the 854 students, including his 11 district added placements. I did make the mention, we were approved for the ROD grant application for Bingo School. We weren't approved for Downing Volts yet. We haven't heard when we're going to find that out, because it could be months of when we're going to find out if we can get their products done. No real reason why we weren't approved for it, because it's all the same application, but we're waiting here for them. Just want to recognize some of the activities we've seen going on the last couple of weeks. I just thought we'd admit that. Happy week at the Bingo Town Show last week, where Mrs. White scored a great show with those kids here at Volts, as well as last week, the holiday concert, the Samaje Games with several staff members, packed in Triton auditorium. Those kids did a great job, getting opportunities, pictures up, I know on their website and Facebook page and things like that. We did have a successful evening the other night, the basketball game, we played with Triton, with Bellmar at Triton High School. The kids were excited to play, and Mr. Wayne was happy for having that happen, and Bellmar's interested in doing that again this year, I believe, for the home game they had from Bellmar, they had a host there. Just want to thank Triton for doing that. A lot of different holiday activities the kids doing this week, and it's fun to see. Want to thank all the teachers for conferences fitting in, and then we cut the conference stage down from four to three, but we were able to get all the conferences scheduled.
Mrs. Yezzi said that Downing had 95% participation, and Bingo had 96% participation of, here, it's a parent-teacher conferences, so that's alarming statistic, it's awesome.
Exactly. Again, once again, any parent that wasn't able to make it, teachers made plans either before or after school, coming up, or phone conferences and things like that. We'll give you updates on teacher evaluation, because that's one of the big things we talked about, and I believe that's one of our board goals as well. But we've met again today as administrative team, talking about evaluations. We're up to date on December, and some of us already have begun January evaluations for that. Myself, again, professional development, I have my new teaching, new superintendent academy is tomorrow up in Triton, as well as I completed and I added attachment of my former evaluation for my three-month with my mentor, Dr. Schreider, which I gave to you just to see what's going on. And I pointed out that it's incomplete, because we haven't finished it yet, so hopefully we'll be finishing that up by the end of the school year. As far as roundtable, we'll be meeting next month with Burlington, I believe, in Walser County Superintendent, because we had a safety presentation that might have stayed, changes that have come down that way. I did give an update on the district goals. You know, the first district goal we have is for SGO implementation, and that has all been done. Kind of gave you a summary and a timeline, and we do that every month. I'll add onto that what we've done. The second district goal was the new teacher evaluation, I'll give you a timeline for that. And then the third district goal was improving communication with the schools and public through via resources, website, Facebook, and I gave you some other things we have involved with, parent-teacher, parent advisory group, Home School Council, parent nights, Dr. McCarron's been running quite successfully. We picked that up again in January, so please tell people, invite those things, we do it during the day, we offer it to the parents as well as the evening, and if they don't, aren't able to see those presentations, they're able to view that on the webpage as well, getting things out there. So, you know, a lot of good things happened, we're excited moving into the new year, and we look forward to hearing about the ROD grant applications, and we look forward to some of the projects we have all in the school, and we'll keep it posted.
So does that mean, so what was scheduled on the ROD grant, Butch, for Bingo?
Mostly just windows, window replacements.
So we wouldn't start that during the school year anyway?
No.
Okay. So it's not like we're being held up, or we are being held up?
No, we're not really being held up to anything. It's holding up, it's like, we've put aside any possible repairs, because there's no sense of putting money into the windows until we get the ROD grant to replace them.
Okay.
So it's just, yeah, probably one or two broken per classroom.
Okay.
Colavita? In reference to the communications?
Yep.
You may want to consider adding, as I had reported to our group when we had our last meeting, from the NJFBA, state meeting that I went to, they now have a site that parents can go to for additional information about how school districts work, and how to better communicate as a parent with the administration at school and teachers, and if you just go to, you know, New Jersey School Board Association site, there's a, there's a site there, we may want to list it here for parents.
We can link that for you.
The link is in there.
It is a good site, I was on it. Somehow I bookmarked it on my own computer, and I went on it the other day, and it explains really what school boards do, the budgets, it explains everything in like layman's terms. It's really great.
Because parents, really.
Now, where does it link once you get to that site? What do you?
I don't know, I, when I, on a, when you get to school board stuff on your email, it had a link, and I clicked on that, and then I saved that in my bookmarks, I'm not sure.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just being, for Sean's reference, saying, on our website to give our parents.
Oh, you could, I, I remember.
Oh, you got it, okay. Never mind.
He, he did it right now, this morning.
Yes, he did, I know. It's already gone.
Working on it.
He linked it, it's up there. It's all.
Darn, you're good.
It's his website, it's excellent.
Thanks for pointing it out.
Is there a link to turn on?
No. Yeah, I, I, after Mr. Schmidt's comment, I might have to go read up on linked up boards after this, that's what I'm going to do over my winter break. All right, so PTA report, there's no, no one here, they'll catch up with us in January. New Jersey School Board Association, did you have anything to update us? Did you have a meeting since February's meeting?
Yes, yeah, I was at the meeting in November, there were no resolutions statewide that we were going to be voting on, so that's where they did, they actually shipped, took us to that site, that parents could go to, and went through many of the little venues, and it was excellent. And then we, you know, we reiterated the fact that they urged a mid-year evaluation, and that, it was apparently quick meeting this time.
All right, great.
No resolutions were up for any vote. And again, as I have in the past, if they were, I would bring them to the Board first, I would want your consensus as to how we would, me to vote when I'm up there.
Okay.
As a Board.
All right. Kylie. Negotiations update, please.
We had had a few meetings with the end of the teacher association. We currently are still negotiating, we have at the end of the month, we're waiting, we have some dates we'll need to talk about, what day to meet. We have an tentative date that we will be meeting, and we'll announce that as soon as we have one. We're waiting to verify that with our representation for our, our order, so.
All right. So just some progress there?
Meeting was canceled, failed 37%.
Oh, okay, okay.
Kind of put everything in a.
Throw us back a month.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're hoping to do that at the end of January, it's what we're, we're shooting pretty much in January.
We're on page four of the agenda, we're under property and transportation.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Naomi.
You're welcome.
Thank you, CHAZ.
Thank you.
So, under property and transportation, I need a motion to approve the use of facilities.
I make that motion.
Motion made by CHAZ.
Second.
That motion.
Seconded by Patty Smith. Roll call.
Patricia Adair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Benzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
And Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve item number one, under personnel?
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lynn. Roll call.
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Benzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
And Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under finance, I need a motion to approve items number one through six.
I'll make a motion to approve under finance, numbers one through six.
Motion made by Naomi?
That's seconded.
Seconded by CHAZ.
I'll second.
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Benzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under curriculum, I need a motion, a motion, excuse me, to approve items number one through four.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Patty Smith. Dr. McCarron, I noticed here that it says your report is attached, did you have anything to add to your report? I'm sorry, I skipped over you.
No, we had a parent event that'll be posted under our parent resources, probably by tomorrow with PowerPoint, everything like that for parents. We'll be going back to another parent event in January. Chances are, we'll be looking at state assessments. I will be having teachers providing students with one to two sample problems from the park assessment, which we'll be seeing in the 14, 15 school year. They will then attach the flyer for the parent event to their students' practice problems, so that way parents can kind of see what their children will be seeing at different grade levels, and that will kind of be the focus for our January parent event that we have.
Just so you know that, I asked Mrs. Yezzi, I don't know if you were still in here, the second round of MAP scores are going to go home too, so you might want to think about that for February.
And then, also with them going home, it'll also, we'll probably bring that back up again during the January.
January as well, okay, thank you. So Maria made the motion, seconded by Patty Smith, sorry. Roll call.
Okay. Patricia Adair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckeye?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Benzarella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
And Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's nothing under policy and public relations this evening, so again, we are open to recognition of citizens and staff on non-agenda items. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and/or complaints through the initial contact with a staff member or members involved therein and Chief School Administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the Board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited in length to three minutes. The public is reminded that all public complaints against a district employee must be made through a specific grievance process. A description of this process may be found in the Board of Ed Policy File Code 0167. This policy is available upon request in the office of the Board Secretary. Any individual naming an employee to complain before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. At this time, does anybody have any public comment? Mr. Schmidt?
John Schmidt, Gloucester City, New Jersey, again for the record. I guess I'll start off with something nice before I have two tough questions. Happy New Years, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everyone. We compliment the Board for being open and transparent at their meetings, and I talked into a few people recently within the Board of Education circles, more in the central region, more in the region of the state, but Board of Education nonetheless, had an interesting situation a couple of weeks back in Washington Township, and I called this person up, and I said, "Now, how does your Board do this?" And they said, "We, we engage in dialogue, you know." To the most part, we don't have problems, sometimes we have problems, and you know, it is what it is, but it's just the people's meeting. I was at a Board of Education meeting in which they don't, you get up and you comment, but they, they won't speak back until everyone has done speaking. And they said that policy is the policy of the NJFBA, and the NJFBA record says that the Board of Education meetings are for the school boards, the public can watch, but meetings are for the school boards. And I said to my friend, I said, "The meetings are public meetings, they're there for the people, and the school board exists because of the public." And she said, "No, frankly, I agree with you." She says that that's just a backward policy. Because I was floating the idea out, well, you know, if that's the position of the NJFBA, would you support, you know, a resolution with your Board saying, you know, "We don't agree with this, because it's setting, it could set a bad precedent." And, you know, so I might be hitting you up in a few months, but I want to compliment you for that, and I do, as you talk very positively of you for that.
Thank you.
Haven't been around much lately, I've been doing some other things, but I do watch for a distance. Who is the new solicitor of the Board?
The new solicitor of the Board was the same, was the, is this, is, same firm?
Just a different.
Just a different, the different associate in the firm.
Same hourly rate and all that?
Yes.
Okay. Final issue, is this a administrator? Can't say I'm, I'm not sad that your old BA left, I'm actually very happy, I did not like when you hired her. She didn't last too long. It seems to be a very common thing back when this interim business administrator phase. What, what's the timeline on that? If you really get someone that might make commitment for three, four, or five years, so you have some continuity within that position, it's that I would think you might have a four or five BAs in the last three years.
Want to touch on that?
Absolutely. One of the goals when I was interviewed for this job is, you know, we talked about hiring the best people possible, and I know you haven't been here since that took over as superintendent. And my plan so far, I think, has worked out pretty well. I know you don't see that on a day-to-day basis, as far as people I'm bringing in, but I'm bringing in the best people that, not only that I know of, that are getting glowing recommendations of the work in previous districts, and I'm also bringing people in here that are going to be here for a long time. And the plan we have in place in the next couple of months, restructuring some things in the business office, sharing some responsibilities of current staff members we already have in place in the business administrator roles and possibility, and the people we're assembling, they're going to be here for a long time. I'm not planning on two to three, because I plan on being here for as long as the Board will have me, and I plan on retiring from this district, I said that before. And the people I've surrounded myself with, I expect them to be right alongside with me for a number of years to come, not the fixings, because that's, you know, Earl's been a great asset to us with his wealth of experience, but the meeting with Ray Colavita during the audit, that was one of his recommendations he made, was like, you need to find somebody here that's going to stay here, because the turnover has affected us in the business office as far as making, I'm shocked we only had one, to be honest with you, one sighting in our audit for some of the grant activities, you know, speaks well to the previous business administrator, keeping on top of that, but it doesn't help us to have this turnover. So we are planning on having a plan in place, checks and balances, cross-training our business office, but having a plan where we have somebody for a number of years to come, so that is...
Is there a timetable to get someone in that position and follow up?
That's.
As municipalities with their municipal clerk, um, you're not allowed to have that, the active title for so long.
Well, you can have an interim business manager up to two years, that was not the plan. We hired Mr. Vassal, who stands for June 30th. Um, he has been, he has said on, you know, to us as a board, that, to the board members, that, you know, he will step aside if it, the plan takes place quicker than June 30th. He will, you know, help us transition that new person in, that he will, you know, not hold us to that June 30th if it's best, do, he wants us to do his best for the district. And he wants to leave this district better than he was when he found, you know, when he died.
And we also, um, Mr. Inuti, when he came in, you know, with a new set of eyes, you know, um, saw, and, and, and Earl saw some things that we were lacking. You know, for example, like only one person knew how to do something in the business office, so if that person was sick or that person left, then we were in, you know, we had, we were in a jam. So we're looking forward to cross-training everybody in that office, and we also just posted, you wanna talk about the post that we just said as well?
We have posted for a, um, a district accountant position to do the day-to-day bookkeeping for the district. Um, because the intention is not to hire a full-time business administrator. And to use, again, we have some people, you know, we had to go out, or use somebody in-house that could share the responsibilities of what they're doing currently, in addition to the business administrator piece. Um, that person obviously would be a certified BA to oversee the business office. Um, but the strain on the day-to-day bookkeeping things that were happening previously, the last couple of BAs, not just the previous, um, it, it takes a toll on the person. And that's really not specifically their job. After that meeting with Earl, he, he did a nice, uh, you know, breakdown of their responsibilities. The, the BA's role is not specifically to do the day-to-day bookkeeping for a district and some of the other things that are doing, if I speak, or the intelligent work that's going on in the business office.
The, the business administrator was so busy doing the day-to-day bookkeeping that they don't really have time to do the oversight and the, um, checks and balances that normally should happen. So that if, in a normal situation, one person does the data entry, business administrator then checks it to verify that it's done correctly. If you're checking your own work, it's very difficult to find the mistakes, so, um, and also the, the general overview, oversight, and making sure that timelines are being met, that, uh, well, as Mr. Calavita mentioned, the, uh, making sure that the correct postings are being done in the correct places, uh, for various grants and, and special projects. Um, when you're the person doing the posting and you're the person doing the checking, you're checking your own work, and it's very difficult to find if you've done something incorrect, because you did it incorrectly to begin with. So you probably didn't realize that it was a mistake. Um, by going with a full-time accountant and a part-time BA, part-time BA will have the time and the ability, and hopefully the knowledge, to, um, be able to do that oversight, make sure that, uh, things are being done correctly.
What do you mean part-time? Do you mean like a shared service?
So, yeah, so what we're, what we're going to, what we're looking for, because you're absolutely correct. I mean, we've, we do not want to have five more business administrators in the next three years. We're going to, uh, the board talked about going with a part-time business administrator, either through shared service or maybe someone in-house. We don't know that yet, we need to post that, and we, you know, we, we're planning on doing that after. We, we already posted though for a full-time bookkeeper. So our two goals is, one, that obviously to have longevity, but two, if we're going with a part-time, full-time bookkeeper, and a part, like with an accountant background, and a part-time business administrator, it'll, uh, it'll save the district money as well. So that's our goal. We met, um, back in December second, we had that special meeting to talk about this.
Well, Glenn, and I, I, like I said, I haven't been here, but I did here earlier in the year when, I don't even remember her name, uh, when she was still BA, that you hired, I think, was Ballard Carmody back to do some work in there?
Some of the rod grant work, because the rod grant applications were so, obviously, it's how they approved one school, but not all three schools, which.
And that was, and that was actually previous rod grants from the two thousand and ten year, I believe, that.
So we had her come back to complete her paperwork, so that way we can get it out, because it was a deadline. And, um, people now looking at, you know, with his thirty-plus years of experience, you know, and, and being honest and open, we now know what the problems are, and we're gonna fix them.
One final question, with the BA, I'm assuming he's not here five days a week?
No.
Whatever. Um, how do you, if somebody were to email him and ask his custodian records, um, response if he's hired him for two days and, like, unless, is the superintendent custodian? Or does that transfer Nancy?
I get my emails too much, I hear.
Okay. The other one was terrible, so, thank you.
All right, any other questions, anybody?
I'm kidding.
Sure.
Okay. First off, I need to retract, that has not officially been withdrawn, so if we argue for four more hours on, in the January meeting, it's gone down, but still actively pursue it in the meantime.
January one, is that deep?
I don't have, damn, I don't have.
I have the date, I'll text it.
January eighth.
Okay, yes, I see.
January one?
Eighth.
You know, continue to.
Oh, Jan, the Thursday, that Thursday?
Wednesday.
The Wednesday. Okay, so then, Monday, January sixth, so I can just say that publicly, at six PM, is going to be our reorder meeting, because that's actually what's next on the, on our agenda.
Yes.
Monday, January sixth, at six PM, Patty.
I heard you.
Because Tuesday is the barrow, and then Wednesday will be the, um, Wednesday will be the planning zoning, planning zoning board. So that way, there'll be three separate meetings on three separate dates, so if anyone wants to go to any of them, they have the opportunity to do so.
And then we have our regular January, is that correct?
As of right now, we'll talk about that on January sixth. So we are meeting again, Monday, January sixth, two thousand and fourteen, at six o'clock.
Say it again.
Monday, January sixth?
Yes.
Six PM.
Right, okay.
No work session, we'll go right into the reorder.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions, come on?
No, I don't have, I, as a parent in the district, I wanna say I've had to come here, um, a couple of times in the last few weeks for, um, Santa shop, and, you know, pick up a child for a doctor's appointment. And I just wanna point out, as a parent, I was aboard, not, how wonderful the, um, transition has been in the office. I just, from my standpoint, I haven't seen a beat be missed, and there's things that I need, and, you know, things that, and to me, it's wonderful. And then, and again, Mr. Peely, publicly, I would like to, as a parent, just say, because I think, you know, too many times, we're recognized as only a board member. I know, you know, when I come in, I come in as a parent, you've said this to me before, I'm a mom before I'm anything else, and I trust my children in this district, I respect the district. I had an issue, and I, again, I just wanna let everybody know, you know, I'm very well-known in town, and I've had texts and phone calls and pictures sent to me about an issue at Benham. And, you know, Butch, what have I, Mr. I, you know, uh, just immediate attention was brought to something that, you know, we live in a litigious state, and you just never know what's gonna happen. And I know in my role and other organizations in town, you know, I do everything I can to protect the children and the parents and the people, and, you know, it was a situation where, you know, we as a board have to, you know, eh, people complain about things, or people compliment things, and, but when you see something that you, as a person, could see potentially become a bigger problem. And I made a phone call, and it was prior to, like, normal business hours, and it was handled. I had one of the parents in town who texted me about the issue, say, don't know who you called, but it's funny that within a half an hour, there was already, you know, you had already, you know, acted upon it, and there was already, you know, visible, you know, results. And I just think it's huge. I, and, you know, I'm, Mr. Schmidt, I respect that. I've been here not eight, nine years like Samantha, but, you know, the, the turnover since I've been here, and I just believe that the people that are in place now are where they should be and are doing a wonderful job. It's just, I haven't seen a beat be missed, and I, I, I value everyone here, I really do. I really, really do. You know, it kinda speaks when we're talking about, like, can you send a link to the, to the website, and someone's already, like, you know, half doing it? Just, I value everyone here, I really do. And if I wasn't sitting on the board, you know I'd be standing there saying, because I, I stand, because I love my board.
That's why you're here, thank you.
I know, I just wanted to remind you. Think I exceeded my three minutes of time.
All right, thank you. Um, with that being said, I, I, and we'll, we'll piggyback off of that, I believe that, that the board definitely believes that we're in, we're headed in the direct, the direction that we want to go in. So with that being said, happy holidays to everybody.
I just made one more compliment that doesn't fit into, like, the, my fir, I, again, it, it deserves recognizing. My son has, none of my children have ever played school sports until this year, and I just want to compliment the best boys' basketball coach this year. He is incredible, I mean, I supported, I voted, we all did, but the, um, like I said, the best people are in the jobs, and wow, is he, um, totally earning every, um, dollar that comes with that annual stipend, because.
And only, his dollars don't add up to the hours.
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's the coach I know.
Incredible, incredible, I believe the administration deserves. But I just wanna know, is part of that, you're, Mr. White is at every single game, he's at, I'm looking at his playing paper, he stays for every practice, he's at every game, but like, Mr. Peely, you know, came back for that game at Triton, like, those kids value that. They appreciate that, they recognize that you're there, you know, and it means a lot to them. So again, basketball coach, heads up, he's doing an awesome job, everybody should come out and watch one of these games, they really should. But to all of you who, like, show up and, you know, stay the whole time, and, you know, we thank you for that as parents, I think, so.
It's worth it.
Yeah, I know, well, I thought.
Don't tell my wife, I tell her I have to be.
I was gonna say, do you have one of the seven kids with you?
Yeah, exactly.
I need a motion to adjourn on this time.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi, all in favor?
I.
Eyes have it in seventy-four.